Baldwin Park, in the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. This one will place a flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, want to say first of all, good evening to everyone that's joined us here today. I want to close on behalf of a resident that probably just about all of us here know, passed away, Martin H. Road. Mr. Road was born on November 24th, 1932, Matthews, Ohio. He died peacefully on February 28th at the age of 81. Marty was a resident of Baldwin Park for over 45 years. He gave a lifetime of service to other, as others at St. John de Batiste Parish and School, American Legion Bishop, Ahmott High School, and Boys Scouts of America. Marty was also preceded in his death by his son Albert and granddaughter Cami. He is survived by Elaine Road, excuse me, his children, Tim, Teresa, Loretta, Chris, Michelle, Sharish, Denise, and their spouses, 25 grandchildren, family, and friends. Marty leaves a legacy of service, laughter, and celebration. So, our deepest condolences goes out to the family. I know that this weekend, Saturday, I believe, at 1:00 PM, the services will be held for Mr. Road, who lived off of, actually, Big Dalton, I remember, prior to him moving out, took a tour of that big, huge house with a beautiful pool in the backyard. But the legacy that he leaves with us was a community and his family. So, our condolences goes out to the family. Anyone else wishing to close, any other individual?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I did attend the St. John's Fashion Show this weekend. It was over 550 tables sold, it was a full house. So, I just want to thank all the participants that went. It was a great event, saw a lot of old friends, a lot of old alumni from there. I know myself and our city treasurer, Maria Contreras, went to that school, graduated there. So, it was just a great opportunity for all of us to get together, be together. Also, wanted to mention that the Business Journal recognized Park Plaza, our plaza right here where Superior is, on a magazine, and said it's one of the, recognizing, gave it an award for being one of the best shopping centers in the country. So, I want to thank, hopefully recognize, the organization, the, I'm sorry, what's the name of the firm that's doing the?
New Mark Merrill.
New Mark Merrill, I forget their name, but, I just wanted to see if we could put that on the now and use that as a model of what other shopping centers should do. And I think, as you've seen, they've done a remarkable job in keeping up their parking area, keeping their landscaping clean, putting the new signage that they have, keeping their tenants' buildings well-maintained and well-painted, and with the beautiful water fountain that they put in front of Bank of America. It's just really great, and I'm hoping that other, of the stores continue to market themselves in that way. Thank you.
Real quick, also, close on behalf of one of our commissioners, Cecilia Bernal, Park and Rex Hermont passed away. And we received a notification that the recreation, excuse me, Ms. Bernal's mother passed away last week. Mrs. Mary Duran serviced our, excuse me, on Thursday, March 6th, Church of the Redeemer, which is located here in Baldwin Park at 3739 North Monterey Avenue. Had an opportunity to visit with her during this past summer. And what a great person, and what a great legacy she leaves here from us. They go back probably over 60 years in the Baldwin Park and Azusa area. So, our condolences goes out to Mrs. Duran. Alrighty.
I would also like to include that not only is she Cecilia Bernal's mother, but she's Louise Duran's mother as well. Longtime bus driver and resident of Baldwin Park, a family that has been here for a long time. Mrs. Duran fought a very hard and strong battle with cancer. And she was a real trooper, a wonderful lady that kept a great attitude no matter what. And she will be missed, really and truly, she will be missed. And we have to be there to support the family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I also, I know everyone just offered their condolences, but, you know, as everyone knows, that family is very close to so many of us, and we have a personal relationship with them. And they're going through a really difficult time, and they're actually the inspiration a lot of the times for me when we do the cancer walk every year, really for life, and then we invite people to come. They always have a team, I always walk on their behalf. And it's not only the mother, but there are several members of the family that are struggling with cancer. And so, I always like to bring awareness, if anybody can ever do anything, including walking at our walks, that would be great. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, okay. Alright, at this point, we're going to go into the, one of the first proclamations that we have, which is the Adult Education Week. Oh, Madam City Clerk, sorry about that, and our city treasurer. Good evening. Your mic's off, I think?
President.
President.
President, thank you very much, Madam City Treasurer, Maria Contreras. Alrighty, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and to the first item, which is, we have proclamation. Not certain if anyone here from the adult school? I'll go ahead and read this, the proclamation which reads, yes?
There is somebody there. There is someone from the adult school.
Oh, okay, yes. Alrighty, I'll have you come up here once I read this out, which is that, Adults and Community Education Week, March 10th through the 14th. From March 10th through the 14th, our state will observe California Adult Education Week. The Board of Education of the Baldwin Park Unified School District acknowledges that our Baldwin Park Adult and Community Education Program is an integral component of California's educational system. And California Public Adult Education Program serves local, state, and national interests in providing lifelong education opportunities and services to all adults. These opportunities and services address the unique need of individuals and communities by providing adults with the knowledge and skills necessary to participate effectively as a productive citizen, workers, family members, and consumers of goods and services. The Baldwin Park Unified School District Adult Community Education Program provides learning opportunities to adults in parenting, family literacy, elementary and secondary basic skills, ESL, English as a Second Language, citizenship programs for adults with disability, short-term high unemployment potential, career technical education programs, and classes for all older adults. So, at this point, let's come up here, one of our teachers from the adult centers has come up here. We'll present her with a proclamation. Hey, let's come up here.
Well.
Oh, you want to just take our picture first? Oh, we don't have anyone. Who's standing here? Okay, alright, then we'll put you up to the mic. Alright, thank you. This one, let's give the mic over to Linda Rodriguez, who's a long teacher as a part of the Baldwin Park Adult School.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I didn't expect to be here, but our director, our senior director, John Kerr, and Denise Tornator could not come tonight. And so, I'm here in their stead, and very proud to do so. This October, we'll complete my 25th year with Baldwin Park Adult School. I don't give the glory to myself, believe me. It's a wonderful place to work, and it's been a gift to me for all these years when no one wanted to hear about the classes that I wanted to teach. And Bob Benbow said, "Yes, I like your ideas." I am so thankful. But I wanted to say that this is a place, adult school is a place of opportunity all over this country, but so few are still operating as they used to. And we are most grateful, most thankful, that our school, because of wise administration, has been able to endure, and those who endure, I believe, are rewarded. So, because of wise moves way back, we're still in existence, thanks to our administration. And the thing that we want everyone to know is, we are here to serve people, not only of this community, but neighboring communities. If their schools don't have those opportunities, we're here for them. And it's a chance for people to realize their personal, educational, and career goals. So affordable as opposed to universities and private schools. If you don't know about our adult school, it's so easy to log on to beeace.k12.ca.us and find out all the wonderful things that are awaiting us. It's an honor to work there. I hope I give out first before the school does, because it's a wonderful place. This city supports our school, I'll never get tired of saying that, and we know it. And we are most thankful. This is more than luck, that we are here to serve the community. And I'm most honored to be able to stand here in front of you. I recognize this wonderful.
Alright, the next one that we have is the certificate presentation to Baldwin Park High School students for their participation in the Clean Chart Challenge that was organized by Waste Management. So, I believe Terry Muse will be doing the presentation from the Baldwin Park High School students. Are they here? Okay, back in the back, okay. This time, come up.
Okay. I want to say a little bit about the program, if that's okay?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Last November, 11 students from Baldwin Park High School, along with their advisor Holly Juniper and Waste Management, gathered for three Fridays before school to embark on the Clean Cart Challenge. These students arrived at school before the sun rose in the cold morning air to don safety vests, gloves, and clipboards, with a mission to help educate the neighborhoods around Baldwin Park High School about what to put in their recycle bin. The Clean Cart Challenge was launched by Waste Management as part of America Recycles Month to help increase recycling in Baldwin Park. These students lifted the lid of the gray recycle carts, peeked inside, and took note if the cart was clean with all the proper recyclables, and put a congratulations tag on the recycle cart, or dirty with contamination, or food, or yard waste. And they received an oops, not everything in this cart was recyclable. From all the clean carts, one resident won a drawing for free month's trash service. And the winner for the free month's trash service was Jose and Ruth Leon, who live on Puente Avenue. I'm not sure if they're here tonight or not, but I know I called them, but I don't know if they're here. The students received community service hours and a firsthand lesson on how to recycle properly. The goal for these students is for these students to carry forward this knowledge to their friends and family and create a more sustainable Baldwin Park. So, we have the students here, and I know you have the certificates, so do you want to call them up?
Sure, you want, let's bring them up here.
Okay.
Go ahead and mention their names from there, and then we'll bring them up here.
Actually, I don't have the list of names.
Oh, you don't?
You have the certificates though, right?
What, uh?
They didn't provide certificates.
No, no certificates.
Oh, okay, I thought there was, oh, okay.
Sorry about that, you know what? Bring them up here, let's take our, we'll take our photo, and then make sure that they get them.
Okay. The students that are here are Adali Perez.
Oh, thank you, go ahead and mention them.
Alberto Loera. Kayla Newgirl Lopez. And Diana Jimenez.
Alright, and I know you're the teacher, what is your name?
I'm Mrs. Juniper, and I want you all to know that we looked in your trash.
That's good, alrighty, come on up. Come on over here, everyone.
They're, I think, 2014, they're graduating.
They're graduating here! Wow!
Okay, ready?
I was born in 93.
So good here! I'm not so interested in living right here.
Alright, let's give them a great hand. Thank you. Want to let the students know that we have two Baldwin Park graduates, with this council member, Monica Garcia, and council member Cruz Baca. Alrighty.
Mayor, can I just say a few words real quickly? I know that we're very proud of our young individuals, but I also want to recognize Waste Management. Let's not forget, you know, I want to thank Terry Muse, Waste Management, and Caroline, everyone at the office. They've always been so supportive, and I always continue to work towards bettering Baldwin Park. So, we appreciate it, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, thank you very much, okay. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public communication. Yes. Oh, yeah, that is right. Alright, I need to also just cover something because of the Finance and Housing Authority. This is announcement, as required by the government code, section 5494.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. Alrighty, noted that, so at this point, we're opening up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Alfonso Contreras, a longtime resident of Baldwin Park. I'm here to let you know that our Baldwin Park Sister City Association will be hosting Tasco Guerrero, our sister city, in Mexico, June 9th, and they'll be here for approximately a week. Hopefully, we can get your support, and our potential even housing for that matter. So, and we're working, we're presently working on our weekly event that we're going to be having, and hopefully you guys can join us and participate in that. On the other hand, on my other hat, it's a water hat, we finally got rain. And it was long overdue, hopefully we'll get a little bit more rain in the near future. Or some of us got more than rain, we got a little bit of a storm, but it was rightfully needed, and hopefully we continue to preserve our water. Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Thomas Carey, I wasn't quite ready yet, but that's okay. I understand you're going ahead with that Rome project. Is there something wrong with people that are insisting on jamming that in there? You didn't learn from other things, I guess. I thought with a new council, they wouldn't continue to give away the city, but I guess, guess it doesn't matter, doesn't matter who's in there. It's a sweet deal for that company, they don't have to furnish parking, use the parking structure here. I don't get it. The sweet deals, the low interest, it's these young people here that are going to end up paying for this for 50 years, 2% simple interest. And if they go nonprofit, guess what? The city doesn't get any tax money, none at all. Isn't that just wonderful? You didn't learn anything from Walmart, gave away a nice piece of land to the biggest retailer in the world. Kaiser down there, another nonprofit. Well, so much for tax money for there. It just goes on and on, just keep giving it away. I know maybe somebody can sue and put a stop to it that way. It seems to be the way to go these days, sue for this, sue for that, shouldn't come to that. Perhaps the only option for city at Baldwin Park is to do what San Bernardino did, go belly up. At least you can start on a fresh slate. I mean, it's just, it just goes on and on. Do you think about the traffic and all these extra lights? You put all these lights, you've got this train over here. A month ago, an ambulance got trapped over here at Ramona. The damn train was in that station. It got trapped there on the way to the hospital. What if you're in there? What if one of your relatives is in there, where seconds count? That extra minute stuck there for that stupid train, you might not make it. Then what? And you want to put more lights to tie up the traffic even more than it already is? Think, they gave you a report, why don't you read the damn report and see what's in there? Is there something, something too hard about that? Maybe they should print it in a different language, maybe that'll help. English, Spanish, German, Japanese, whatever it is you need it printed in so you can understand that this project should not be put here. I don't live here, so I'm not going to get caught in the traffic down here. But these people are going to get caught in this. They're already caught with that stupid train that's in the station, and the guards are down, nothing moves. And you're going to put more lights and more traffic. I don't get it. You just give it all away. I'll try and spare the language because, know what I'm thinking, and it's not good.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, move along.
Hello, everybody, I'm Art Luna, I live on the other side of the freeway. They have not finished cleaning up some of the areas that I want cleaned, because all these people that come to the hospital, as I've been repeating a number of times, get to see this bad area. I will get with Mr. Walls or whoever wants to come out and look at these areas so you can actually see it when you get off the freeway, or you can visit me, it doesn't matter. When you guys put stuff up on the wall up here for us public people to see it, which happens to be 90% of us Baldwin Park residents, if you can't put a price on there, what it's going to cost us, and what it's going to cost to build, or what it's going to change, don't put it up there. Why are you putting something up there you don't know what the value is? Or how much interest, or how much taxes are we getting? That's what you need to put up there. We're going to make this amount of money in taxes off this property. It's going to cost us this amount, minus our taxes, this is what we're going to lose. Are you guys afraid to put numbers up there that can tell us we're going to make money on this project? Or we're going to lose money? That's how simple it is. You have a finance guy here, use him. That's what we pay him for. You guys know it as well as I do. He's up for reappointment. If he can't draw you up numbers for that, the people that give you that should give you numbers to start with. A blank piece of paper up there, and then I could put on there, "City of Baldwin Park owes me $5 billion", somebody's going to tear it off the wall, throw it in the trash. And if you put something up there and say, "This project's going to cost me half a million bucks, we're going to make $5 million on it", people might come up here and give you guys a big hooray. You're going to put stuff up here for us to see, put some numbers with it. The last time I asked that, you guys took the so-called project down. Don't take it down. Are you guys ashamed to tell us we're not going to make money, or we are going to make money? You guys are here to make sure that we make money. That is the number one project that you should all look at. If we can't make money, we don't need your business. Because when you go to work, first thing your employer says, "If you don't make me money, I'll put you down the road." That's what happened to this city council prior. You weren't doing what we public people think you should be doing. You all work for us. And that means, when you put stuff up on that wall, put numbers with it. Otherwise, don't put it up. Another thing, I will thank you people that are trying to help me clean our side of the city over there.
Mr. Luna, your time's up.
And even the ones that have not helped me, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Paul Cook speaking. In law school, they always taught me less is more. Oh, welcome back, Raquel. How was your trip to Raleigh, North Carolina? Hope you had a great time, we haven't seen you in a while. One of you behind these dyes I've taken appropriated action with. At least one of you will find out in a few weeks, and all of us will know. Not going to say much more. We'll have to go ask the community to be generous to our boxing coaches too, looks like. And I'm doing an investigation on more people. Too bad Correos on stress leave, they call it. Guess someone asked them to look for another job, huh? Alright, thanks.
Alright, move along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak?
John Rios, resident. I came to that meeting last Wednesday, which was a total joke. It's, for me, it's a joke. The city council members and everything, you guys are not doing your job. This project they were trying to bring in here, you should let the people from Baldwin Park decide, not you guys. And Mr. Luna says, "We hired you, you guys have to respond to us." I did a little investigation. It seems like a little project over here, they're going to have, what, three computers? We have, out of the valley, San Gabriel Valley, we have the best school right here, school district. After-school programs, summer programs, we're getting a brand-new library. It's going to have all those programs. Supposedly, this project's supposed to help the kids. How can you have any kids in there? 600 square feet? Come on. Just give the permission to anybody that has a two-car garage, build it so people can go live there. And I think a two-car garage is probably bigger than 600 square feet, okay? What are you guys thinking about? You guys are just giving the money away. $500,000 in taxes? Are you guys going to lower our taxes? As homeowners, are you guys going to lower our taxes? Can we go and apply for a nonprofit organization too? You guys have to, let's think this out before we go in deep into it, you know? That same company went into other cities, which I won't mention right now, but I will in the future. We're doing some investigations where they built. Those other cities are completely out of it with them, you know? What you guys did prior to this new city council, that we thought we're going to use better timing, better knowledge, you guys are not doing it. My time's up, right? It's okay.
Mine is not up yet.
Okay, well, he's volunteering. Thank you, Mr. Will. Thank you, Mr. Rios. Alright, thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, how are you?
Elected city officials, everyone present. You know me, I'm for change, and I said it before and I'll say it again. I want us to get out of the Flintstone era and into the George Jetsons century. But I think we're going backwards right now with this project. I live in a thousand-square-feet home, and I'm crowded where I live. I mean, in my house, I have to roll over the bed to go get my socks out and roll over to the other side. I don't understand how people could live in, how many, what was that, six, seven, 800 square feet? But irregardless, remember that there's going to be single moms moving in there with maybe one kid. And what's going to happen in five years if she has two or three more kids in there? You know, we're going to go from playful city to slumlord city. And we don't need that. Kind of look at this and really think about what we're doing, if it's worth it, if what's going to happen in the future, long-term effect. Also, Downing, holy moly. I'm a senior citizen, and I'm on all kinds of meds, and when I get to that corner to cross- Ramona, to get on the other side, I literally can take a nap there. I don't understand why that light takes so long and even more so when the railroad, the train crosses Ramona to head towards downtown Los Angeles, that arm is still down. So I, I just don't understand, once the train crosses, why doesn't the arm go up and let the traffic move? Because all it does is accumulate. And again, I have to sit there and twiddle my thumbs. So I hope someone has a time of day to go over there and look and see if we're following the right code. Shouldn't take that long. Anyway, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving, oh, excuse me, Thanksgiving, I wish, I'm hungry for turkey, but St. Patrick's Day. And God bless you guys, you're doing the best you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move along with public communication. Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and declare the public communication closed. All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the agenda, however, we'll be pulling one item out. So, thank you, legal counsel. Item number, consent counsel, I'm going to pull item number four, and at this point, I'll make for a motion to approve items one, two, and three.
Second.
Second, any objections, see, none, so move. All right, item number four.
Give me one second, what's number four, the resolution for the...
What's that?
There's one item that I wanted to pull, give me one.
Yeah, item four.
Is it? Oh, that's it.
Yeah, I'm pulling item number four, which reads, "Resolution Number 2014-005, amending Resolution Number 2014-002 by the appointing a new representative to the Civil Defense Area D General Membership Committee." Do you want to go ahead and pick someone out here and then we'll bring this back to agenda again, again, for passage?
Yeah, okay.
Who's on their now?
Counselwoman Garcia's on there, but if she wants to come up there, I'll go on there.
Oh, no, I've resigned from that. Yeah, I don't have time.
That's fine, I will...
All righty, okay. All right, so at this point, go ahead, motion for council member, Assistant Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a second, no objections. All right, so that's the only one, am I correct? All right, so...
Yes, that's it.
All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move for consent counsel's of item... No, we're going to bring item number four to the next agenda for resolution. All righty, thank you. All right, the next one is the public...
Mayor, may I request we do item six first and then, and then do the budget after?
Oh, okay, all right, that makes sense. Okay, public, the public, item number six, which is the public hearing regarding the... Is that what you want to do, the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan, Public Service Program, and Citizens Participation Plan. All right, go ahead, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to go ahead and hear the president.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, you caught me a little bit off guard. Tonight's evening is the first of two public hearings required by HUD to allow residents an opportunity to comment on the proposed CDBG and home-funded projects for fiscal year 2014-15 under the annual action plan, which is due to HUD by May 15th. The specific item under consideration tonight is the funding for public service programs. As a reminder, the maximum amount the city, the maximum amount of funding the city may provide to public service programs is 50% of its annual CDBG allocation. Because the federal government has not yet announced the actual 2014 CDBG allocation, tonight's hearing is considered using last year's 2013 allocation. Several years ago, to ensure the city's compliance with HUD requirement to encourage and receive public, public participation, the city created the CDBG Advisory Committee, which is comprised of the Housing Commission, joined with the Recreation and Community Services Commission. The role of the CDBG Advisory Committee is to review public service agency applications, discuss and consider the needs, the community, I was going to say, consider the needs of the community, and make recommendations of funding to the city council. In accordance with the city's citizen participation plan, the CDBG Advisory Committee held two public meetings. At their second meeting held on February 6th, agencies requesting funding presented their programs to the committee and answered questions regarding their applications. The committee then made their recommendations based on what they felt were the most important needs and priorities of the community. The participation and input from each commissioner this year was, again, very impressive and much appreciated. Tonight's hearing also provides each applicant the opportunity to make presentations before the city council. I do, each agency was notified and I do see some in attendance and they're ready to make presentations or answer any questions you may have. Therefore, the city council has requested to open the public hearing, receive public comment, and upon closing the public hearing, consider the funding allocations for 2014 public service programs. I'm here to answer any question... Oh, I'm sorry, on the side, on the final note, I did receive information that the allocations for 2014 should be announced by May, March 17th, and then I will come before you on the second public hearing, which is scheduled for May 7th, to let you know if there was any changes and what those changes, how they affect anything you do tonight.
Okay, so just so I understand this, right now, we're using last year's allocation?
Yes.
And we're waiting until March 17th to know what the actual amount is?
Yes, because of our deadline and the public comment period and the review process, HUD requires, or actually requires that we start the process, and then right before we submit it to HUD, that's when they make the announcement. We'll come before you on the second public hearing, which is May 7th, and we'll have the final numbers if it changes.
Okay, so when is the deadline that they would, that they need it by? So we're going into May with this?
They need it by May, May 15th.
May 15?
But we have 30 days to, to receive input, so I, the reason why I do this so early is because if you don't decide tonight, then we go until March, and I have to start the 30-day comment period by April.
Okay, I guess my preference would be that we, I don't know, if we don't know the exact numbers, we may have to just listen to everybody's input and kind of hold on to this until we know what the number is.
The exact numbers are really never announced until after we do this process and the final one is when we come in. It's usually very minimal, maybe, I think last year it was less than 2,000.
Oh, very small numbers?
Yeah, it's very small numbers.
All right.
It's just I have to let everybody know that they're not the actual numbers.
Okay. And I guess we could hear the presentations that any other group has.
All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. So those of you that are here to speak on behalf of this particular subject, you're welcome to do so at this point. Opening up the public hearing. All right, so just, all right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wayne Lemons, I'm a pastor, I'm in charge of Cory's Kitchen, which is a food bank. I recognize that you guys already serve a food bank, already support a food bank, and that's really not what we're here for.
Number six.
We've been in business for 18 years, serving the public. Last, last year alone, we fed over 13,922 people, families. 3,341 of those families were from Baldwin Park. In 2011, I approached, I went to a meeting in Baldwin Park where they were talking, excuse me, not Baldwin Park, San Bernardino, where they were talking about the problems, the growing problems with our veteran community. 80% of our heroes who are coming back from the war zones are suffering from some sort of PTSD. And it's a statistical fact that within three to four months of being discharged from military service, three, three out of four of those individuals will be homeless. Cory's Kitchen started reaching out to these soldiers and doing PTSD intervention, along with job training, housing services. We have a, an intern program where we train them in job skills and get them jobs. In 2012, the San Gabriel Valley Women's, the YWCA awarded us this award for our work with what we were doing with women veterans. Bottom line, on that particular case, the example that they used was we encountered a homeless, homeless veteran with her two children living in a car. And we were able to get her into housing, get her job education, get her placed into a job, and get her back on her feet. Cory's Kitchen is trying to develop the Veterans Outreach Program by furthering our job placement skills, our computer lab for jobs, job searches, and build out our meeting area so that we can involve them in something that is called the Community Resilience Program, where we help them deal with those triggers that set them off and bring them down and calm them down and get them into a place where they can be an asset to the community rather than a hindrance. We would appreciate any consideration you may be able to do for us.
Could you repeat the, the organization you represent?
Cory's Kitchen.
Oh, I see, I got it. All right, thank, thank you very much, all right.
Thank you.
All right, move along with the public hearing. Any other wishing to come up here and speak on behalf of their organization? And please state your name and the organization, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Lopez, I'm with Project Sister Family Services.
Thank you.
Okay, so, hello, I'm the Prevention Services Coordinator with Project Sister, and it's a pleasure to be here with you all this evening again. I, Project Sister Family Services is actually the only state-designated provider of sexual assault crisis intervention and prevention services in a 27-city region, in parts of San Bernardino and Los Angeles County, Baldwin Park included. We are again requesting funding for our prevention education programs for youth to be delivered in low-income schools, the topic of focus being anti-bullying. I want to thank you on behalf of our agency for your support of our programming in the past and hope that we can partner again in the future. And if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. Maybe at the end we may, thank you. All right, move along. Pastor Flores, good evening. Good evening.
Counsel, and welcome to our newest council member. Appreciate the work you do on behalf of the city, the patience you have in listening to us as citizens as well. I'm here, my name's Paul Flores, I'm a pastor, Church of the Redeemer, and the president of the nonprofit as well, too. Church of the Redeemer has been here for over 50 years, and I've been here all of those 50 years of our history. For the past 25 years, we've engaged in our food ministry, our food program at the church. I definitely wanted to highlight the fact that we appreciate what the city has done through the, through the block grant and the work that the commissioners do in hearing all the different entities that come forward to present their projects. There's a lot of great projects that are going on in Baldwin Park, one of them, which you think is ours, and I want to thank you for all your support. But we all know that it's important to, to invest in those that belong to the, to the city, have longstanding commitment to the city, like ourselves. Our church has been around all 50 years in Baldwin Park, and I've been the current leader the past five years, as we work to continue the legacy of serving our community and building our new generation as well, too. On behalf of the food program, I just gave you some statistics to that as far as who we target in terms of homeless, low-income, seniors on fixed income, oftentimes illiterate and severely disabled. It's definitely a multicultural, multilingual combination of people that we serve. Primarily, our services are toward people from the Baldwin Park community, but it does extend further to that. Yet the community development block grant is for those of Baldwin Park only. You'll see our, our percentages of what we do, and even this past Thanksgiving, being able to feed 175 families with a turkey, as well as all the trimmings for their, their meal. We put on events that bring people together so they can get the word of mouth of the program. We've expanded the program from one day a month to almost every day where we give what we call emergency meals. We have a big day every month, but we also, if everybody comes, we try to meet that need on a daily basis. All funding goes toward food, we don't use any funding toward salaries or toward personnel, and all personnel that work in that are volunteers. So it's a great thing to see people that not only receive from the, from the food program, but give back in turn, so we have a great volunteer staff that give back as a way to, to say thank you to the city, to the church, and to others as well, too. Just to highlight that, you know, obviously you're aware of the unemployment rate and the issues that Baldwin Park people face. I don't think the hunger issue is going to go away anytime soon, so I think it's important to recognize when, when things get, push comes to shove, the basic things as far as food and clothing and shelter, to make sure that those things are taken care of as well, too. And then I want to highlight that, you know, we do live in Baldwin Park and it is an opportunity we have to, to serve and to give back and to be proud of the, the great work that not only what city council is doing, but all the volunteer organizations do. So our projections for 2014, 2015, you have those, and I want to thank the commissioners for taking that into consideration and presenting their proposal as well, too. We just hope to continue to grow and be able to never turn anyone away that is hungry as well, too. So once again, I just thank you for the consideration of this evening. Our motto has been, "Building generations, serving the community." We want to be givers and servants and lead by be, by being servant leaders. So thank you very much for hearing me out, and if there's any questions, I would be happy to try to answer those questions as well, too.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. At this point, we'll probably do that at the end as well. Thank you very much for the presentation and thank you for these, for this handoff as well.
Welcome.
All right, anyone else wishing to come up here? This is, oh, here it is, right here. Okay. Anyone else wishing to come up on their public hearing? This is the time to do so? Okay, we have a gentleman, come on, come on up here.
Good evening, my name is Bob McKinnon. I am the director of the Winter Shelter Program for the East San Gabriel Valley Coalition for the Homeless. And first of all, I would like to thank all of you, the City of Baldwin Park, for the support that we have gotten from you over the years. I would want to say we are a 501(c)(3) and have been since 1994. And as a matter of fact, the first office that we had for the Coalition for the Homeless was in the City of Baldwin Park. And since that time, we have moved a couple of times, and now we are at St. John Vianney Church in Hacienda Heights. During this last winter shelter program, we had approximately 1,000 unduplicated men and women who came to our shelter for various services we provide. Of course, we, in addition to, to the, the shelter, the dinners, the breakfast, we also have the dentists, which came twice a week to the shelter at the different churches. We also had the nurses coming every Thursday during that period, three-month period of time. So in addition to providing shelter, we also provided health care and dental care. And we have an emergency assistance center at St. John Vianney Church, which is open Monday through Friday. And on an average, like today, we had 33 homeless people that came for showers, for food, for bus tokens. We have families that come from hotel vouchers. And we are really the only place in East San Gabriel Valley where homeless people can come to get the type of services that we provide. So also, we have transitional apartments, two transitional apartments, which we utilize primarily for the benefit of single parents, usually they are women with children. We have been doing this now, as I said, since 1994. We have approximately 500 visits each month to our emergency assistance center, and it basically covers the, the community of the East San Gabriel Valley. We do have approximately, I think, during the last nine months, we had 200 unduplicated and 300 people who came from the City of Baldwin Park for various services. So that's primarily what we do, and we have been doing it for a good length of time. And we are really the only organization in the San Gabriel Valley that provides the kind of services that we do. So again, I want to thank you all for your past support and hopefully we can continue to get that in the future.
All right, thank you very much. All right, move along with, with the public hearing. Okay, so no further interest, and now declare the public hearing closed. All right, so at this point, I want to ask you a public question. So...
Sir?
So basically, this evening, the actual fiscal year 14 and 15 is the third section of the actual, for the CDBG, am I correct?
That is in column C, yes. The third row.
All right. And as we know, obviously, they're all listed up here, so council members have any questions? So council members have any questions?
Well, I have some, some changes that I would like to, to ask for. I was just looking at the graffiti removal service, and last year, we had them at $30,000, I believe, $31,700 and something, and I just, phew, I just saw that, the drastic cut. I believe it was like $10,000. And one of the issues that we've had that's plagued our city for a long, long time, as you've heard Mr. Luna, Mr. Reels, even our city clerk often say how there's a lot of graffiti in our schools, and, and I certainly don't believe we should go backwards. I think it's a really important program to continue to keep our city clean, and so I really would like to restore the graffiti removal program. But I also saw that the youth employment was increased drastically by 11,000, so I just feel that those were okay the way they were, so I want to recommend that we go back to the original amount for youth employment program and put that back into the graffiti removal program. So we can do that by making, and even 10,000, bringing the graffiti to 30,000. I know it's a little less than what they had last year, but it's comparable. I don't want our city to suffer and start looking, the aesthetics just not be there. So that's my recommendation for that portion.
Okay, what, what, just to repeat, where you're going to get the money from?
From the youth employment program. They went up by, I believe, $10,000. So that's where they take it from, and so I honestly believe that we will be better served by putting that money in our, in the aesthetics of the community.
So that would go down to 11,149, and then, and then the graffiti would go up to 30,000?
Correct. And there's another area of concern for me. I also see that we brought down the domestic violence program, I believe, from last year, if I'm not mistaken, like $3,000, and that concerns me. I have spoken to some of the ladies that, that work that program, and I see the value in our community, I see the work that they do, and I actually believe we shouldn't decrease it. I actually thought that we should put more effort into, to making that department a little stronger. So I'd like to recommend that we go back to the original funding for the domestic violence program. And I know that, right now, the recommendation is $12,000. And originally, they had, I believe, approximately $15,000. And again, if we're not going to increase it, I definitely do not, I do not want to make it less. So I believe that we can take that from, not that it's not important, but I would like to bring back the Recreation Scholarships Program to the original amount that they received last year, so we can keep the domestic violence program and the scholarship programs at least comparable to what we had last year.
Would you want to make that $12,000 and bring... Maybe, are you, are you keeping tabs on this?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you, with your approval, I can start putting her numbers on there, so you can see that?
Yeah.
Would you please? Thank you. Okay.
So from the RECs scholarship programs, pay it back to the domestic violence program. And I believe that we do that, the domestic violence program, as well as the RECs scholarship program, will go back to the original, which, which is what we had last year. I just don't believe that we will serve our community by cutting domestic violence assistance that drastically. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Cruz, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, Cruz, Cruz, I could wait.
I would also like to make some changes. I would, the Family Services, the Family Services Center, I would like to see 28,500 from the 30,000 that is recommended. Because I would like to give, I would like to give a little more to... Where am I here? To the... No, I'm sorry. We'll keep the homeless at 10,000. It's my mistake. But I would like to see, I would like to see Cory's Kitchen, of course, is going to stay the same. They have a very nice program. And Project Sister would stay at 2,500 as well.
I'm sorry, Councilor Bucka?
I didn't... Cory's Kitchen would stay at 2,000. The Pride Program would stay at 21,985. Project Sister at 2,500, as recommended.
Okay, so what would the rest?
And the Redeemer? I would like to see the Redeemer down to 8,000, so that we could make it up on some of these other projects, like domestic violence.
So would domestic violence stay at 15,000, or?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it would.
15,000 even, or?
15,000 even, and 30,000 for the Family Service Center.
Okay, what about East San Gabriel Valley homeless?
It would be the 10,000.
Okay. The Pride Program was going to stay at 21,000?
Yes. And St. John's?
Project Sister was going to be what?
Uh, 2,500. That's what was recommended.
Okay, and Santa Anita Family Services?
At 3,325, which is the same. It would stay the same, as recommended.
And St. John's stays the same?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're, you're now, you're noting it there, right?
Um, Project Sister is recommended at 3,000. You said to leave them, but then you said 20,000.
It's recommended 2,500, I thought, no?
It says 25, I thought it said 2,500 where I was, but...
It's 28,500, what, what its last allocation was?
Or you're going...
28, 2,0850 is last year's, the commissioner, the council recom, I mean, the commissioners recommended 3,000 this year.
Oh, 28,500.
Okay, 28,500.
Sorry, it's last year.
Okay, and then, and then we're now looking at St. John's?
St. John's stays the same, I guess, right, is it?
As recommended?
Yeah, just as recommended.
At 21,500?
Yeah. All right, just so I understand where we're at, I guess...
Now we have 3,300 left to give away.
Oh, can we put that in St. John's then?
You know what? We should at least get, try and maintain a Church of the Redeemer, because they, they really do one heck of a job, and it's really not asking for much. I mean, we're going to, we're going to go from 10,000 to 8,000.
I know, but I just want to ask, can we put the 3,000 with St. John's?
Well, the St. John's only requested, they actually received the amount that they requested. So we have a budget, that, that's exactly all they asked for. So if we give them more, then we'd have to work with a whole new budget as to what it is they are going to do with that additional funding.
So what does that...
Okay, so we could, we could go back and ask them. I'm sure they could expand the program that they have now. I mean, they're the largest church, one of the largest churches in, in our area, and they're not...
One of, the only concern that I have with that is the amount that he's giving us as reported is only about five people, and so that's why that amount was so little. He, they have, they have problems getting the backup doc, the supporting documentation for the requirements. So they may have a class of 30, but they're only able to prove that for five people, and that's his struggles, and I believe that's why he requested such a little amount.
Okay, and put it back in the scholarship program.
Either the scholarship or the Pride Platoon.
Or, you know, put it back to youth employment.
Well, I would agree with the youth employment only because I know that I just reduced their funding to restore their graffiti removal service, so I would be okay putting the 3,300 in the youth employment program, if everyone agrees.
That would bring them up to 14,553?
Yeah.
14,449. Those are the final allocations, if you want to look at the...
Okay, so does that make, does that make the right number? That evens it out, right?
It does. It, it, it's calculated correctly on the bottom.
Okay.
If you want to just go through the numbers one more time, Cory's Kitchen is a new program. They're given $2,000. Church of the Redeemer has been reduced from 12,350 to 8,000. Domestic Violence Advocate remains, well, has been a little bit reduced from last year just by $26. Coalition for the Homeless is given the 10,000, increased by 500 from last year. The Family Service Center, their allocation remains as the same as last year. Graffiti removal, it's $1,000 less than last year. Pride Platoon is given 21,950, which is the same as the Commissioner, and it's increased from last year's. Project Sister remains as last year's allocation. Recreation Scholarship has decreased, I'm sorry, it's the same amount from last year. Santa Anita Family Services is the same from last year. St. John's Social Services is the same as last year, the same as requested, and youth employment has increased by a little, by about 4,000, 3,000.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I'd like to advocate that we give the Church of the Redeemer Food Bank a full 10,000. I think it's very compelling that, right now, our city is experiencing unemployment, and we've seen a, a few more homeless out there, and so if we can have a, an organization locally that helps to support these families, these individuals, I'd like to advocate that we restore that to 10,000. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor? Yes, Council, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
I, I know these are difficult funds, everyone's got to fight for every penny. We sound like a whole lot of money, 150,000, but I would move that we approve the funding as it is stated on the, on the...
I'll second.
Okay, and there's a second? Any objections? Okay, and see, now so move. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All righty, at this point, we're going to go back to, we're going to go back to, I didn't remember, another, the public, the number five, which is also a, a public hearing and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2013, 14, for the City Financing Authority, Housing Authority, and Successor Agency. So at this point, Greg, thank you, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I have a short PowerPoint presentation. It's about 105 slides less than what you saw in September. All the, all the, the figures you've seen are those that we presented at previous meetings. The over, total city budget, including all funds for next year, is proposed to be $79,273,127. That includes your general fund, some of the related funds, like the park maintenance district and internal service funds, all of your special funds, like Prop C and your, your clean air money, the financing authority, which is primarily your debt service, along with the successor agency, which is the former redevelopment funds, and then the housing authority. With the general fund, we closed last year, and, and it's been audited and reviewed with a general fund reserve of $5,125,675. The recommendation for this year in terms of projected operating revenues is $24,005.5, plus we have the $1 million that we received in August for waste management as part of the renewal fee, which would give you total revenues of $25.5 million for this year. The expenditures, which we'll review shortly, is projected to be $24.4 million, leaving a year-end plus balance of $1,096,559. So we are projecting a year-end balance in the general fund of $6,222,234. In your general fund revenues, your, 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 your largest one is sales tax, and then, and then, and your property in lieu, which is the former vehicle license fee money, and then after that, the property taxes, franchise, and utility users' tax. As I said, that all adds up to $24,538,000, plus the one-time fee from waste management. This is 3.3% above what the actual income was done, we received last year in terms of general fund revenue in the operating. As you can see from this, 80, almost 83%, 82.9% of our general fund revenue comes from taxes. And then 9.2% is from our charges and services, so the overwhelming share of our revenue is from the various taxes. The plus of this is it generally allows for a more stable revenue stream. A lot of cities that are very fee-driven had more, had a tougher time when the economy dropped than even we did, because a lot of development projects that totally went away deeply impacted their, their total budget. In terms of our expenditures in the general fund next year, administration is just under $1 million. That includes the City Council, the City Clerk's office, the C, the CEO's office, and human resources, finance, and what we call non-departmental, which are general operations, like our health retirement is $1,500,000. The police budget for next year is $15,906,000. We've created a new department called Neighborhood Safety and Services, which includes the, our animal control, crossing guards, and the red flex, and that's $886,000. Community development, in terms of general fund, is $1,570,000. Our Public Works Department only uses $380,000 of general fund money to operate its vast operation, and then Recreation and Community Services, we're recommending $3.6 million. And as you can see, our, our police department's budget is 65% of the general fund, and then the next highest is our recreation at, at 12%, and then everything else is 4% or below. And looking at our budget, our general fund budget, I bring this number out to show you that we are very much personnel-driven, that out of that $24.4 million, 17.9 are personnel costs, and then 2.4 are contractual, which some of that is in, would be in lieu of some, you know, personnel or some services. And when you look at that from a percentage standpoint, 73% of our budget, our general fund budget, is, is personnel. In this budget that we're recommending, there are no reductions from last year's budget in terms of personnel programs or service levels. However, this is still a minimum service level, maintenance budget, and we still have several areas that are drastically understaffed, and we're going to be needing to look at in the next few years. We did, as, this does include the police captain and the deputy city clerk that you authorized us to add in in January. We are, to balance this budget, we are freezing nine police officer positions. However, to put that in perspective, over the last few years, you've had anywhere from 12 to 15 vacant sworn positions, so this is actually less than what the departments had to operate. This, this freeze is recommended both by Chief Taylor and has the full concurrence and support of the POA. I've talked with their president, Mr. Adams, several times, and he believes that will actually help give, along with Chief Taylor, more stability to the department, because there won't be so many vacancies that have occurred in the past. This is balanced with a slight surplus. If you don't include the $1 million, it has a surplus of $96,000. In the previous two years, you had projected deficits of at least $1 million two years ago and a half million last year. This proposed budget is what our acting executive team manager with the executive team believe are, what we see is the realistic expenditures and staffing levels that actually can be hired and implemented within this year. And, and so there, rather than full-funding positions that were only going to be available for a few months of this year, and then looking at the number of positions that actually can be filled in recruitments, that in the past, you have had positions that have been budgeted, and over time, they, they just have never been filled. And these projections are based both on, over a five-to-six-year spending, historical spending pattern and staffing pattern. And why I wanted to, to show that is I looked at the last five years of your general fund in both, the, the second column over is what was actually budgeted. The next column is what was actually spent those years. And as you can see, there is a major difference, especially from years 2009 through 11, of what was budgeted versus what was spent. And I think that's allowed some of the confusion on terms of, you know, what our budgeted numbers are versus expenses and vacancies and everything. The last... The last two years, the numbers get a lot closer in terms of budget versus actuals, but you've actually decreased the budget significantly over these last two years. And then there's a graph chart just to show the same thing with the gold being what was budgeted and the blue being actual. In addition to the general fund, we have included the funding of what we see are necessary equipment that needs to be replaced immediately, which includes a street sweeper, lawnmower, a parking enforcement vehicle, and our graffiti vehicle. Several of them are just not working, and a couple, I think if we ran out of duct tape tomorrow, they would be history. I will tell you that we have bids in on the street sweeper, and right now, Mr. Wall is working with Mr. Martinez to look over the best option. And if you approve this budget tonight, you will probably see a proposal back in the next 45 days for you to adopt. In addition, the chief, along with his command staff, have evaluated the police vehicles, but they can't proceed any farther and bring in a recommendation until this budget is adopted. So there are several equipment items that are really contingent upon us adopting a budget and getting out of the continuing appropriations thing, position, which just funds operations. As far as the future, one of the big things is, is that Chief Taylor has worked to try to bring a, a strong team approach that we also need the council to be a part of in terms of really formulating what our vision, priorities, and the goals and objectives should be over the next year to three years. We really do need to have a collaborative effort with our unions to update our present job and personnel classifications and salary compensation study. I've talked with several of the union leaders, and they very much would like to be a part of that. When you have left staff, having them equipped properly makes them more efficient and more effective, and we believe we still, we need to continue to upgrade our vehicles and our equipment, especially with opportunities to use new technology across the board, everywhere from our police records management system to also upgrading our, I hate to say gas pump, but...
It's a fuel management.
Our fuel management system. In talking with Mr. Martinez, we would allow, he, he would free up about 20% of his time if, when we present next year's budget, if something like that would, would be authorized. We still have facilities that we're evaluating, that we're going to need to do repairs to. And in the long run, in short run, and I showed you where that, that four-year gap was in terms of when the pension obligation bonds would be paid off, we really need to look at a balance in planning, using both the financial resources we have yearly, our reserves, and our present personnel, to have a comprehensive plan in providing the appropriate service levels to the community. And then, as we talked several times, but we're going to continue to work on reviewing and updating both our revenues and our fee structure. A lot of our fees have not even been touched in over eight years. And then the continued development of an economic and marketing plan to present both to the community and businesses and, and people outside to get them to come and spend their dollars in Baldwin Park. For tonight, we need to open the public hearing. Mr. Mayor, I know it's on four different places in the budget, so I don't know if we need to do them separately or concurrently, and then take public comment, and then close it, and then after that, it's up for your discussion and direction, and hopefully adoption of a budget. And if we can get this one done, I'll be back at the end of May for next year's.
All righty. Thank you very much. Real quick, I just want to ask a question, because I know, obviously, we're showing a balanced budget. One of my concern is the, on the medical retiree health trust fund initial payment of 913,696, so that basically, we're not paying it this fiscal year, am I correct?
No.
So that will be moved over, so technically, technically, we would have a deficit if we ended up having this particular section, am I correct? Am I right?
Well, yes, if you pay that, but that has been, this is the third year that, that, that schedule's been presented to you.
Right. So that, that will also continue to grow the following year and the year thereafter, am I correct?
We would have to adjust and come up with a, a more updated amortization schedule.
Because I noticed out of the 3,639,277, I mean, obviously, brought down, brought that down and did a good job, obviously, the one-time payment from Waste Management, a million dollars. Also, the billboards, which is over 200,000.
Right.
I guess other lists, other revenue adjustment, and want to thank the law enforcement agency, because again, now we actually freeze nine police officers' positions to meet, to be able to come down off that 3 million dollar budget. I guess my, my biggest concern is that we definitely need to look in the immediate future is how we're going to make those medical retiree health trust funds initial payments, because we have, if not maybe close to 6 million dollars. So we're still potentially looking at deficit and potential areas that we need to cut back to be able to meet that particular expectation.
As I said earlier in the meetings, I, I really would like to bring in the consultant and explain the, the impacts and non-impacts of how we pay it and at what levels we pay it. And then there, the Government Accounting Standards Board is bringing in some reporting requirements about three years down the line. But at what level we pay it, this is spread out over a 30-year period, and, and there can be adjustments. And I think we need to see what the total picture is and what needs to be paid today versus a couple of years from now, and what some of the options are in terms of meeting, meeting those goals.
Right, and the only reason I'm bringing that up, because I know that in, in previous, there was a particular section where there, it potentially could end up to be 60 million dollars if we don't address this.
Right, but one of the problems with the unfunded liability is it doesn't change your annual payments. That really becomes, money's owed if the city would stop paying on an annual basis. I think one of the things that we also have to look at in terms of, as we discuss negotiations from here on out, is at what level for potentially new employees we continue paying that and, and changing our long-term liability.
Right, and I think that's something that the council, we need to address as well. I know we've talked about it before, of creating a possible two-tier system, but again, it's probably something that needs to be addressed with the bargaining units, so that we're making those adjustments. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because this apparently is what all the cities throughout the state of California are, basically, they're not making these payments, they're holding them off, holding them off. And of course, yes, I like the way you put this together, certainly we have a balanced budget and a surplus of 96 million dollars, 96,000, however, it's based, it's based on the fact that we're also putting, we're not paying certain things, and, and then eventually it's going to come into fruition. And, and again, it's something that we all need to make certain that we, we address in the immediate future, so that at least we take the particular steps, because I don't want to see, and none of us want to see, is the total depletion of, of the close to six mil, well, close to five, or close to almost 6 million dollar reserves that we have. But yes, sorry about the council member.
No, that's okay. Mayor, I would like to bring this back to the May 19 meeting, if you please. There are, there are still some questions that I need to go over with Mr. Graves, and you brought up some very good points as well, and I would really like to put this over to the March 19 meeting. Did I say May before? March 19, I'm sorry.
And I'll second. And the only reason why, Cruz, obviously, you're new, and we're here, this is something that's literally affected all the cities because of the recession, because of the, of the lesser money we're receiving from the property tax, sales tax, and a multitude of other things. So it's not something that was mismanaged, it's the fact that that recession has literally reached us now. West Covina, major problems, speaking to the mayor, Steve Herford, that they're going to be facing within their own police department, fire department, there's all kinds of things that are occurring. I mean, we may possibly have to consider other alternatives to make, to make certain that we are operating in the positive. And, and again, the, the good part about that, we don't have much to begin with, of course, but we're okay, and that's what I...
I'll go and second your motion, however.
Hold on, I just want to...
Yes, council member Ricardo Pacheco.
So I, I think we need to have a, a public workshop on this unfunded liability, but can you just explain a little bit more about that unfunded liability, about the, how it's amortized? And I know that at previous budget meetings, you talked about how that number is just a number that is used by the firm that developed that number, and you were going to look more into it to, to see what the realistic number is, because that number isn't really a number that...
It's a, it's a realistic number, but it's based on the premise that you have made commitments to your retirees, and that they want you to set aside money in case at some point in the future, you stop paying the annual cost. One of the, the things, tables I showed you in September had, you know, the unfunded liability and amortization schedule, and then it had annual payments. Those, the annual payments that covered the current retirees actually, for the first 20 years, went up, to where they peaked out at about 3 million. At the same time, paying into the, the trust reduced your liability, because you were funding what are contractual commitments. One of the questions that I've had, that I haven't been able to spend time with the consultant, is, okay, if we're paying into this trust fund, you know, at what point does that 60 million dollars sit there? But there's no advantage to the city, except it sits there, and they're still paying the ongoing costs. It's like, okay, we're going to get put 60 million aside over time, and it's going to sit forever, as long as whatever councils there continues to make the ongoing costs. I would like to have a, you know, a more harder concern, I mean, unlike PERS, when, you know, you've heard the discussion with the state with both SCRS and PERS in terms of unfunded liability. And what they're looking at is projected coverage of pensions, which need to be covered in the future. With the OPEB, it's based on the fact that, that what they want, because of what happened in a couple cities back in the Northeast, and a couple of major corporations going bankrupt, then the medical retiree contracts were voided, and the retirees were no longer receiving those medical benefits. And so that's why the Government Accounting Standards Board said, no, you need to start reflecting those commitments. But, and so in one way, it's an accounting, I hate to say an accounting item, but it's an accounting thing to show on the books, you have made certain commitments for the future. At the same time, I think you need to be totally aware that that money may just sit over there forever, at least with my understanding at this point, and it doesn't change what you're paying yearly, until the retirees end up, you know, passing on. And, and that's why I would like to get a clearer picture from the consultant to say, okay, if we put the 60 million here over 30 years or 40 years, at what point does that money come back to future councils? Or do we start getting credit, if it's earning interest, to lower the ongoing annual operations costs? And that's one reason I've been a little on, on the hesitant side of saying, yes, you need, you know, this 900,000, if it's not paid at this point, is a catastrophic effect. But it is something that we do need to address, and it may be that one of the issues is that in the next few years, while I think it's going to be very hard to pay that full 900,000, we start looking at making even part payments to show both any creditors, any, any people looking, that yes, the city is interested, and making sure they begin to address that, it's just that in terms of overall priorities, we can't do it on a 30-year amortization schedule. Does that sound as clear as mud?
Let me ask you then, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may.
That's fine, that's fine.
It sounds as if, you need, we need to study this a lot closer, and I think we need more information before we could say it's 918 million.
Yeah, it's 913,000 for this year.
But I hear you, I hear you also saying that as long as we're making our payments now, this is just in case the city goes bankrupt 20 years from now, that there is a fund to continue paying our, our commitments for our retirees.
Right.
But as long as we're making the payment, as long as the city continues to run, we can cover those, those commitments.
Right, and I can show you on, on some schedules where, and that was one of the things I looked at, was, okay, why, if we've paid at one point close to 50, 50 million dollars, I was still looking at 2.5 to 3 million that we were having to contribute to cover annual operating costs. And in the flurry of this summer, you know, to get what I considered adequate time to work through that issue with the consultant, I just didn't feel comfortable that I had that time to where I could say to you, this is catastrophic, or it isn't. You know, it is, it is, you know, by accounting standards, you have made a commitment to pay these people, and what they're saying is, we've had organizations, companies, and other governments that have reneged on that. And so they're saying they want bondholders, they want people to know what you've committed to, and are you doing something to set something aside in case future councils say, we're not going to do that.
Okay, Mayor, tell them another question then.
Sure.
But the budget we're looking at now is 2013-2014. This budget should have been approved last year, right?
June 29.
June 29. Okay, so...
Adjustments were made, remember? We request that adjustments.
Right. Yeah, we, I mean, we've done, we, we are, we have, we are still within the continuing resolutions and spending of last year, but part of that means you, you are not authorized to buy any equipment until that is actually approved per, in terms of a budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then let me go back, you had an interesting slide here, maybe go up a couple, where you're showing the, the actual expenditures. So here they're showing the, what was budgeted and what we actually spent.
Right.
So we don't really have this, this deficit, because we didn't spend the money, we didn't spend that 1, 1 million, it was budgeted but never, we never reached that.
The only year that we ended up with an actual deficit was in year 2011-2012, and you had a 938,000 deficit that year, plus 600,000 was set aside to deal with some petition issues. It's said with the state, so I'm assuming by the notes that could be the whole RDA issue. And one of the, the things I'm researching is, when I looked at that year, there were some higher levels of transfers out. If all of those were involved with the, the dissolving of the RDA and the successor agency, because that was the fiscal year that we, we had to deal with that. And I know cities were having to make adjustments on their books and in their budgets, dealing with the ramifications of the redevelopment agencies being dissolved.
Mr. Graves, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I will agree with you. I remember that year, it was just very inaccurate, because we didn't know where we're going to be with the RDA being gone, and money was just being, but from one account to the next, I don't know if, Mayor, if you remember that, at that point, we really didn't know, so we just put a lot of money aside, because we didn't know we had to pay that money back or not.
About 9 million.
So at that point, yes, I mean, I have to say, I, I don't find that to be accurate, but we had to at that time, we didn't know how that was going to affect the city, but I see that's where the deficit came, it wasn't an actual expenditure, but we had the money aside for a rainy day. Thank you.
All right, thanks, council member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. So Greg, can you let me know, what is the total amount that we, what is our unfunded obligation at this point?
Our unfunded obligation is, if I remember, it's about 8 million.
Okay, and that's currently?
Right.
8 million?
I think it's about 8 million. I, I will double check, and I will get you an email, I'll look at, look at the schedule, but off, right off the top...
Okay, because I, I was, why did I think that it was closer to 30 million? What, what is the, what is the discrepancy there?
I don't know. I, I will, I will get back to, to all of you.
Okay.
I think I can answer that, if you, if you're okay with that. I remember at the time, Vijay was asking for 30-year projections, and so at the time when the numbers came out, they just seemed a lot bigger than what we actually owed, and that's where I remember, I saw the 30 million. It was a 30-year projection, not that we owe it now, but it was 30 years from now.
And this is what I do remem- And this is what I do remember. Thank you for confirming that. So I think what we had discussed was it was closer to 30 million, but if we left it for the 30-year projection, then it would be closer to like 90 million. Does that ring a bell at all?
I think he said about 100 million close to it.
Well, yes, I, yeah, what you're, what we're talking about is, is if we did, if we, if we didn't pay into the trust, we would have an unfunded liability of a certain amount. If we paid into the trust as we go along, then when we eliminated that unfunded liability, the savings between the two, about what we would owe versus what would be there was about 60 million.
Okay. So when we have the consultant come before us, then I think that they'll be able to give us the accurate numbers, correct? Or more or less what the projections are.
Yeah.
Based on the current obligation. So it sounds like there's a discrepancy there between eight million and 30 million perhaps?
Well, no, one is, is that unfunded liability goes up each year as you have more retirees. So when, to me, when you say current, they show what the unfunded liability is at, say, 2015 versus 2030. Because what they're looking at is they increase that liability as you increase the number of retirees and then they also figure an average lifespan and that a certain number of retirees will have passed on. And so that's where you get the growth as it goes along.
And when you say they, are we referring to CalPERS?
No, this is a consultant. Because this isn't actually a CalPERS calculation. This is totally done by another, another consultant that specializes in, in medical retiree retirements.
Okay. And now does this affect our bond rating?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay, so when you say not at this time, if we don't pay into our trust fund for the next five years, will it affect our bond rating at that time?
You know, that's an unknown question because we're still gasped, we're still dealing with when they're going to write rules and what rules. And the other part is how the bond, the various bond councils, the markets are going to review all of your financials in total. There was a conference I didn't, I wasn't able to go to, but they sent me the, a worksheet that showed the unfunded liabilities of about 12 cities in the Los Angeles County area. And ours was actually like this compared to eight of the other ones. And Long Beach's bar was this. So one of, you know, with this being a relatively new issue, part of what our bond rating would be is going to be what the various underwriters and, and credit rate agencies decide how they want to factor that in to the total picture of your ability to pay your bonds.
So, okay, so those are some of the questions that I'll have when we bring the item back and when the consultant comes back. And then as far as, so this has more to do with the policy direction here and I do recall that, Mike Taylor, you were, I think our captain at the time, you had expressed concerns about our, our police department being one of the lowest funded, you know, as far as staffing levels. And so my question to Craig and also to you is with the, are we freezing nine positions? Are we cutting them? Is this a trend or is this just kind of a temporary fix for the year?
Well, it's, it's not really a trend. Basically, you run, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong at this, at about an eight to 10% deficit in personnel in a police department traditionally. That has to do with the training, the background requirements. Just to get an officer from day one off the street generally takes close, anywhere from six months to a year to hire them. And that's because of the stringent regulations that we have to comply with, with post and then our city regulations. And then after that, you got to wait till they complete an academy. And then after that, you got to wait till they finish their training for another six months on top of the other six months. And then after that, you got to wait till they finish their probation. So to get an officer all outfitted and onto the street that's really a functional officer takes anywhere from three to five years. That's why it's important to maintain them and keep them as long as you can. So we run at about an eight to 10% deficit. That's customary with most agencies. The only reason we froze the nine positions is because we were funding that in the budget, but we never in actuality ever reached that level. And I don't remember how many years we discussed, Craig, if this has been going on, but we have never reached those levels in quite a long time. So we showed with Craig a realist, a realistic depiction of what we actually operate with. Right now, we're running at about 63 officers, right around there. So if we get up to 68, 69 is what we're hoping, that's going to take us a couple of years to do. And even at that level, we won't be nowhere near over the budget. We'll stay within the budget because we're funded for 69 officers.
Okay, so, and exactly for the reasons that you stated, the length of time that it takes to basically hire a police officer and fill those positions is very lengthy. So will we be, is, I guess my question is, is this kind of the new standard of having 60? We were funding 77 police positions before. We've, I guess frozen is the word, nine. And so now we're at 68. Will this be the new, the new staffing level moving forward in your opinion?
No, this won't be the new staffing level moving forward. It'll be the current staffing level that we're going to use. But I think what I'm trying to say is that it's going to take us two to three years to probably get up to the 69 officers, 69 officers that we're currently funded for in this new proposed budget after freezing the nine positions. So eventually, we're hoping as the economy changes and things, you know, change over time, then we're going to shoot our goal back up to the 78 positions. I think it was 78, wasn't it Craig?
We are currently authorized for 78.
Oh, 78?
Yes. What, if.
I thought he said 69.
Well, no, no.
I thought we were 77.
Okay.
77, but we, we settled on 69.
With, with the captain, with the captain, we are, we have an authorization of 78 positions. What we're saying is currently right now, you have 63 positions funded or actually officers onboard. There's no way in the world that we're going to hire between now and June 15 officers. In fact, we probably will have a hard time hiring 15 officers in the next year and a half. So looking at that, we're providing the funding for 69 officers for this current fiscal year, which we feel, well, we probably are not going to make the 69, but it's a more attainable goal than, than actually budgeting money for positions you know you're not going to fill. I'll give you an example. In San Bernardino, when I was there during the 10 years, we, we had about 205 sworn officers. We did a five-year study and invariably we had 20 positions that never got filled. Didn't matter how we recruited, laterals, 24 hours, holding the Civil Service Commission hostage, just, there was a 20%, a 10% vacancy factor. Now, in the next, say, two years, if we could get the funding up to 72, you want to leave the authorization level at 78 because in most personnel systems, if you don't have an authorized position, your personnel rules generally say you can't go recruit for that, that.
Right.
So you leave those authorized positions, but then it's, then it's a team effort to make sure that the recruiting stays in line with what you have budgeted. But generally, in most departments, they know who's retiring or if somebody's been out on, on workers' comp and it looks like they're leaving, but then that gives you the, the opportunity to start a recruitment on a position, even though that may be filled in terms of a budgeting, but it's still vacant in terms of an authorization. But right now, if we go, if, if we would fill, fill 69 positions in the next year, that would probably be the highest level of officers you've had in at least the last 24 months. And really, in terms of overall, you would be within three officers of that eight to 10% margin that most departments have.
Okay, yes, thank you for that information. It was a little confusing to me, only because I know that in the past, when we were funding the 77 positions, there was the concern that was expressed that we were one of the most underfunded police departments as far as staffing levels go. So with the authorization at 78 and the funding at 69, then we will continue to aggressively recruit and seek out police officers and that will give us the ability to do that.
Right. And, and one of the things is, is, is we were budgeting money and yet the recruitment was, was not being approved. You had vacancies and so you ended up with a budget that was not reflecting the actual expenditures. And this is more in line with what we're saying is, this is the number of officers we feel we can have onboard within a fiscal year. I mean, I mean, we went to, after we showed the chief in San, chief in San Bernardino, we weren't trying to hurt the recruitment. They said, yeah, put in that, we called it salary savings, but we never prevented them from trying to get to a certain level. And eventually, I mean, I would hope our goal would be to at some point have 1.15 officers per 1,000 people. I mean, the, the general, in the 20 years I, I have been in, in financial leadership, most chiefs and with, when I was working with, with Riverside County Sheriff, they wanted a minimum of, of at least an authorized level of, of one per thousand.
Right.
And then they, to be proactive, you want to get 1.15 to 1.25.
Right. And so to that point, I mean, that's why funding the 77 positions for a population of 75,000 was a good number and reducing the number, you know, just, that's where, what prompted the questions for me. So what we will do then is we can revisit this next year to then look at a budget that is greater than the 69, if, you know, just that we can.
We'll have to see and then we'll, one of the things is, you know, our discussions with the chief and the captains will be where they're at in recruitment and what they, what they see. It may be on a recruiting schedule that they're, they're doing well enough that if we can budget it, you know, it's even 69.5. I mean, we have done that when we've looked at, you know, well, we're only going to be at this point and we may have an officer onboard there.
Okay. And then my other question, the other questions that I have, if you, did you want to ask a question regarding that same issue?
No, I was just going to say that this gives us an opportunity to aggressively for the next year, look at revenues so that we can have that available, like you said during the presentation. It'll give you, give us an incentive and motivation to move forward if we want to fill these positions or anything else that we may need to be able to cover it through the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
May I comment on that?
Yes.
Just really quickly, and I know for, for the audience and for people at home, it sounds very, very confusing. I know numbers are thrown, statements are made, but I just want to see if I can just clarify. The thing is that we're trying to balance the budget this past year. And so year after year, we always have 77 officers budgeted, but we never hire 77. We always stay at 62, 63. But the reality is, we never have 77 officers and to be transparent with the, with our constituency is that you need to know that we only have 62. And I know we want to have 77, but it's like someone asking me how much you make a year and as much as I want to make half a million dollars, I don't make half a million dollars and when I report my taxes, I have to report the actual. And so again, our goal is to eventually have staffing as required by law, but for now, we can recruit fast enough. But once we pass this budget and report the actual number without the extra seats that we don't have, next year we'll try and, and bring more officers and report it accurately. And to me, that was a discrepancy last year and I remember I kept asking Mr. Graves because we kept reporting something that wasn't there. So for me, that's not being honest with, with our taxpayers. We need to report the actual and actuality we have. You said 63, correct?
Right. Currently, I, we have 63 officers.
Yes, we have 63.
I'm getting nods from my, my captains. And I think.
I'm over here, Craig.
Yeah, I was looking back there. I said captain, touchy.
Oh, well, I, I could tell you, we have 63 officers that are current.
You know, and one thing to also consider that there's injury, those that are relieved and so on and so forth. So to get to that actual level itself may be almost impossible because of these other things that occur with some of the officers.
And Mayor, just to, to finish up my point, just to be clear again, for everyone that's confusing, I'm sorry and I know it's all technical terms for accounting people, but we're reporting 62, 63 officers and that's what we have and we're not being inaccurate. That's what we have and that's what we're reporting and that's what we're trying to pass as a budget, correct?
Well, no, we have 63 currently onboard. We want to provide funding this year up to 69.
That's correct.
Right.
But not 77, which we've never had.
We're leaving our authorized recruitment level at 78 so that we don't get caught in the fact that we're trying to recruit, if we would ever get to the 69, we would, we would not hold up recruitment because we don't have the authorized positions. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so yes, thank you. Now, I have a couple more questions. The police lawsuit payout, is that included? Are we paying that from the general fund or?
No, that's being paid out, that was paid out of the liability fund.
Okay, the liability fund? So the risk, the risk, our insurance?
Right. And, and so, you know, we'll, we'll look at, you know, what, what the rest of the claims were, along with the joint, you know, insurance agency that gives us that report in May, and we'll make adjustments both this year and for next year on the rest of all of our claims too. Because that's based with what we would pay, what we would need to keep our reserves at on our total claims for the year.
So it's a collective amount and we just have to keep an eye on that, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and, and they generally want a certain level of percentage of reserves. But a lot of times if we write off, while that may be one claim, there may be other claims that are settled for less than what they were booked at originally. And so that may reduce the amount we need, need in terms of a total number.
Okay. And then finally, so this budget, because we didn't go line item per line item, this doesn't restore or does it restore any community programs that we had discussed previously?
No, this does not restore any of the, the programs that have been discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
But it doesn't eliminate any from last year either.
All right, real quick, it was actually motion by Councilmember Cruz Baca to bring this back and I second it, I don't think no objections, but what I will do at this point is open up the public hearing at this point. So anyone wishing to speak on the current budget, you're welcome to do so. And this way, we'll close it up at the last, so thank you. Yes, anyone can come up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I know it's a tight budget, but lately I've been driving some of our streets and that filling of the potholes do not hold out. I hope, I like how you're looking. I hope that there will be some money for actually resurfacing the entire street because I mean, if you go right here on the south side of Ramona, right in front between Main and Ballin', especially when it rains, you don't see the potholes till you hit them. Recently, I had some major repair work done in my car for the reason that the time I go over them is a little bit too late. So I'm hoping that there will be some funding and some of the resurfacing in the streets. I know 20, 30 years ago, we resurfaced all the streets and we were very proud of the program we had, resurfacing the entire city of Ballin Park within a 10-year framework. So hopefully, we can look into something like that or at least worst-case scenario, start looking at the major ones that do need repairs. Thank you very much and hopefully there's some funding for that. Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I know we're not supposed to respond, but just to respond to that, and I'm sorry I had to interrupt. We do plan to aggressively pursue grants because we have been able to take care of our streets and there's a lot of grants available. There are. We just have to be more aggressive and that's one of our goals that it will be taken care of, but we're hoping that the city doesn't pay for it, that we could fund it with, with other sources. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, you can come up and speak on the subject regarding the budget. Good evening.
Yes, on this budget for the, this coming year or this past year and this coming year, you people have to look at income because I know I brought it a number of times. Income pays for this difference that we've been losing up here. The reason why we're losing that, because the economy is pretty nasty with us right now. So in turn, to save ourselves and the city employees and youth people up here, we need revenue and I know I keep jumping on that, but that pays for all of us, for all of youth people and, and other people that work for the city of Ballin Park. Mrs. Baca had the right idea to bring this up for the review because we're losing money technically. We're not saving any. Okay, 300,000, that's not very much money, folks. That's a drop in the bucket for cities. I think one of your major reasons is that people need to pay into their own retirement, into their own medical. Medical is one of your largest differences. Somebody leaves on a medical leave, you're paying that person his wages, his time and everything while he's sick, which is all right. That's what everybody. everything while he's sick, which is all right, that's what everybody works for, but in turn, you're going to have to start making these people pay half of what they get. We could look at what predicament we're in right now, everybody has a different opinion on the amount of money that's involved, but when we think about it, we need to stay up in that million-dollar bracket. That being down in the 300,000, I mean, too many crickets, everybody that plays a lot of wish they could win that. So technically, all this discussion is good, because somewhere along the line, somebody up there is going to get a light bulb turned on and say, hey, tax revenue is going to help pay for everybody, and that's what we need, folks. As much as we complain out here, that's what's going to pay for all this benefit that we're getting. Think about it, Sacramento, Los Angeles, every city, major city, and you people have brought it up many times, they're having the same problem. And what, when you give away the bank, you've got nothing to give for retirement people. And the older you get, you need more medical, you don't need less, but you need more. So we all, including the people back here, we're all going to get to that age where we need more medical, more medical, because we don't get any younger. When you're young, you can go a long time without medical, but then you get to a certain age, and that's where it counts, because we're all going to get old sooner or later. So remember, when you guys bring cities, people, I mean, corporations in, businesses, Uncle Sam gets his share, but we need ours also, to pay all for you people, because when you retire, you don't want to get a letter telling you, I'm sorry, we have to cut your medical, sorry, we have to cut half of your pension. I'm in the same boat. I, I work so I can get all this benefit, just make sure that you guys and everybody else that's out here can get their benefit. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mayor Long, public communication.
Oh, one of the ways to solve some of it is to extend the retirement age. People are retiring at 50, when they're going to live to be 80, even social security is, what is it, up to 67 now? So why are people being allowed, police officers and firemen to retire at 50? Why not 60? You can't collect a lot of your IRAs until you're 59 and a half anyway. So, as people should be paying, they're making big salaries, they should be supporting their own retirements, and they have a lot of options. They have the, you know, the IRA, the Roth IRA, the 401Ks, and so with those, you've got to be careful of the fees and stuff, you've got to be careful with that. And just to, you know, fund your own retirement, you can't depend on the government forever. Social Security is on shaky ground, and, in California too, with all this high-speed rail and all this other nonsense that they don't need here. It'd be better to find a way to keep the water from going into the ocean rather than building a high-speed rail they don't need. Is, but these things of retiring, and, and they're saying the budget's balanced, but you owe $8 million, it's unfunded. Some people don't know what amortization even means. An amortization schedule is like, you get that when you take out a mortgage of 30 years, it divides up the payments over 360, and it changes as, the amount of interest you pay changes as you pay down the number of payments, and eventually shifts the other way, more the payment is principal rather than interest. But in the first 10 or 12 years, most of that money you're paying is interest. So, and that's what an amortization schedule is, as far as that goes, for mortgages. What he's talking about with that, leaving things unfunded, I ask the costs go up if you don't pay enough in, you end up deeper and deeper in the red. And at some point, of course, if the city goes bankrupt, like some of them did, to escape some of the obligation, they didn't escape all of it, because they have to liquidate their assets, whatever the city owns, in Detroit, they had to sell it to try and, you know, get, the state's going to get that money, the Calpers and what's the other one, Calsters, there's two. One is for, but there's one thing that bothers me about everything is that people that worked before they got into the state, and they paid into social security, however, when you were-
The security, your time's up.
Oh, could I have a half a minute more, if that's okay, just to cover the, they take an offset with your social security, you don't get the full benefit, even though you should.
Oh, yeah.
Before you became a fireman, a policeman, or, you know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, all right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
That's it for me, okay.
All right, we'll move on with public communication, and public hearing. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, a quick question, if perhaps our chief could reinstate and clarify the statement that Councilmember Rubio stated earlier this evening regarding the, perhaps a state law that requires the city to have a certain number of officers. There is no state law, but perhaps the chief could clarify that for the public, so that issue is, is resolved. Also, what I would also recommend that the council do is, please do not kick the can on the unfunded liabilities. All you're going to do is going to let the future of Ballin Park pay for a much higher cost than what we could do, than what we should be doing now. So just please, you know, take those items into consideration, look at ways of paying for the unliability, liabilities now, so our future does not have to be paying for a much higher interest rates or much higher liability in the future. Thank you.
Chief, let me answer that, I'm not sure if there's a state law, but I know that there's a recommendation that we have one officer per every thousand resident, so that's what I was speaking to, perhaps there's not a law, but again, I was just speaking to the recommendation of having that one per every thousand, thank you.
You're, you're absolutely correct, Councilwoman Rubio. In fact, depending upon which study you read, you'll have some articles that recommend one, 1.5 per thousand, two per thousand, it just all depends on what study you read, there are several of them out there.
Eric?
Yes?
Just also want to state that the unfunded liabilities is an issue that we need to really take a close look at, no one's trying to kick it down the can, we're just trying to find out how to, what's the best way to, to fund it, and what resources we have to do that, you know, by us continuing to pay what we're doing now, will assure that in the future, our retirees will continue to have medical for them. It's if the city, for some reason, ceases to exist through bankruptcy because of the economy that happened last year, or the last few years, a lot of cities went through bankruptcy, and a lot of those unfunded liabilities were not met. So that, that's an issue that we need to look at closely and determine what the actual solution is in that area.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. At this point, we're continuing on with the public hearing, yes, before I close, thank you.
I just have one question, is that the construction that's being done right here in the freeway next to my house?
Oh, no, this is about the budget here.
No, it is for the budget.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
It's for the budget.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not getting off on-
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Is it the street that we live in, Fraser and Dalwood and all those streets, where they have the heavy equipment, who's going to pay for it? Are we going to put it in the budget?
That's Caltrans.
Because it's breaking up, the street is breaking up, we're going to put it into the budget? Pardon me?
Caltrans is supposed to pave that before the end of their project.
Well, I hope so.
I hope so too.
Yeah.
No, no, I'll make sure they do, that's, that's part of their agreement with us.
That's all I want to know, because it's all potholes and everything.
That's part of their agreement with us, is that because of the additional traffic caused by the detours and their construction equipment, they've destroyed our streets, and they are going to repave them before they're finished with their project.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Wal, just one short question, do you know what timeframe we're looking at, is it going to be three months from now, five months from now?
It's at the conclusion of their project, and I believe when they made a presentation here at the last-
Oh, that's correct.
-full council meeting, it's a year or two out before they're finished.
Correct.
All right, thank you, at this point, I'm going to move on with the public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak on the budget item? Seeing none, at this point, I will now declare it closed, and this point, Council, excuse me, Councilmember Cruz Baca had motion to bring this back for further information, I second it, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Next one that will go, it's the reports of officers, which is item seven, which is approval of redesign of the city's letterhead, so, do we have captured this up here?
Uh, Mayor, this was a, I'm sorry, well, this was a request that I made a while back, I just want to get council's concurrence on what the changes are for new letterheads, and I don't, did you have something more to add, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, not really, not any more than you have to add, basically, this is a quick slideshow, it's kind of like a television type, if Mark can get it up. It's going to run to two type of designs of the letterhead, using the traditional logo that we've been using for about the last 20 years, which has a building and a wagon wheel, and then the old, more traditional logo, which you see on top, which is behind us. This sample that you see in here has a watermark of the current logo that we use on the piece of paper, and the traditional wagon wheel that we used to use over 20 years ago, I think it was before 1994, that one is actually embossed on the left-hand upper side. The next one that you're going to see here is the second one, which is going to have the current logo that we have, it's not really embossed, it's pretty similar to the way it is, but the paper's going to have a watermark of the current hub that we have here behind us at the dais, and that will be on the, the, the stationery itself. So in summary, you're going to have two different types of stationery to pick from, the one has the wagon wheel, which is embossed in the upper left-hand corner, the watermark of the current insignia that the city's been using for the last 20 years, the second one will have the current insignia up in the left upper corner that we currently use with the wagon wheel as a watermark. You have pamphlets that we passed out with you on item number seven that depict these pictures of the different pieces of paper. Basically, in terms of a physical impact, there is none, alls we got to do is just switch it in the current stationary budget that we have, and it's left up to the council to basically reach a consensus as to which one they want, and we'll move from there.
All right, at this point, Councilmembers, go ahead.
Okay, I would suggest we get the one that has the current logo on it, I don't know if the rest of you agree with that, is that fine?
I agree. The current logo being the one with the little house?
Yes.
Oh, I thought we were going to remove that.
Yes, I, I thought that there was some-
I had this one put here.
Yes, that there was another question, somebody brought up the fact that they wanted to see-
The wheel.
Or the wheel again.
Yeah.
And number one depicts the old logo, as well as the watermark would be the little, the little house, or whatever you call it.
Okay, do you guys prefer the one with the wheel on top?
It's just number, yeah, the, the wheel would be up at the, at the top, like it has it here, because that, that's the whole, it's supposed to be the hub of the San Gabriel Valley, isn't it?
And then a watermark of the, of the, of the house?
Yeah, you're talking about number one, sample one?
Number one.
Sample one?
It's this one here?
Oh, is that the one? Okay, I like that.
With the hub, which is the old.
Yeah, I like that, okay.
Okay, is that number two or one?
That would be number one.
Okay, so, so in essence, we're going to do a watermark of the old one?
The current logo that we use right now would be a watermark on the, the stationery itself. The hub of the San Gabriel Valley wheel that we used to have about 20 years ago will be reprinted up in the upper left-hand corner, and it'll be embossed, it's actually pretty nice looking.
Good, I prefer the wheel, but nevertheless, that's fine.
Okay.
So, I do as well, that's my opinion.
All right, this one with the wheel and the little house down here, all right, done.
Okay.
We're going to have, we're going to have that, that house there, is that what we're going to do?
Well, they do, yeah.
Well, it's a watermark.
It's a watermark.
So, only when you make a copy, does it show up, actually.
Okay, all right.
From what I understand, a watermark, right?
Correct, it's a watermark.
Okay, are we good? That's fine.
Let's go.
I'll, I'll direct staff to have it changed over then.
All right, thank you. All righty, okay, thank you very much for that, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Okay, the next one we have, the another public hearing, which is the public hearing and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014, for the city financing authority, housing authority, successor agency, so at this point, who's covering this? Successor, yeah, was it Mark?
Well, that was what was covered in-
Oh, oh, I'm going to go ahead and, okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and open up the, sorry about that, the public communication, anyone wishing to speak on this specific subject. Seeing no further interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, so at this point, we're going to go on to the, oh, yeah, okay, so, oh, at this point, like, we need to entertain a resolution of the successor agency of the city of Ballin Parks adopting the budget of the agency for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2013, and ending July 30, 2014, I'll make that motion, that's my motion. The resolution number is, let me, sorry about the, SA 2014-001, that is my motion.
Mayor, hold on, I just want to-
Yes.
Make sure I'm clear here, what is the difference between number five and under the city manager for public hearing?
Oh, because this one is a successor agency in Ballin.
But it says a city finance authority, housing authority, and successor agency, and the other one says the same, I mean, why are we-
Oh, you're talking about number five? Which reads, public hearing and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2013, 14, for the city finance authority, housing authority, and successor agency, well, they are the same.
So why don't we hold that off for next week, otherwise we're adopting the budget, and we're talking about-
Well, you know what? Legal counsel?
Well, Mr. Mayor Protem, I think this was done so that he could present all three of them at the same time, Craig, but the best way to do it, and make it very clean, is to open up the hearing and adopt each resolution separately, because you do have financing authority that's separate from the housing authority, which is separate from the successor agency, which is separate from the city council budget. But that's up to you, how you'd like to-
So, this is-
Okay, I say just bring it back to the, the index, I need to discuss this with staff.
So, okay, so in essence, we're going to bring this back?
Bring it all back.
Okay, so at this point, I'll drop my motion, so at this point, can you entertain a motion to re-
I entertain a motion to re, to bring this back to the following council meeting.
And I'll second, any objections, seeing none, so move. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the request by Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco, director of city attorney to look into guidelines that govern council members attending council meetings by teleconference, and whether teleconference is permitted or required under the, or required under the California government code, Mayor Protem.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I wanted just to give the attorney to take a look at the guidelines for having teleconferencing, I want to make sure that all the council members understand what the procedures are, that we have some sort of resolution that outlines the specific teleconference guidelines, at least as, as a city, and when we can have those teleconferences, I think that, and how long you should stay on, I think there was a lot of issues, last time we have a teleconference with Councilwoman Monica Garcia, that was, we couldn't hear her clearly, I think the public could hear clearly, so I think there's just issues in, maybe we should just limit it to certain types of your bed reading or something, but I don't know, I just want the council, the city attorney to look at the issues involved in, in teleconferencing, and to provide guidelines as a resolution to the city, and just bring something back we could all look at. That's it for that. Second item I have is, I want to direct staff to provide background information on evaluation and impact of the ordinance 1290, and prepare a report for consideration at the city council meeting on March 19, 2014. I know that a lot of business owners have shown me a lot of concern about ordinance 1290 and what it limits them to do, I think when ordinance 1290 was written, it was at a different economy that we had, and it was a few years back, there was a whole different set of circumstances, and I think now we need to revisit it and support some of our local businesses to make sure that they have all the business opportunities afforded to them to be successful. You know, I think small business in, in this city is, is the backbone of, of our economy, it provides jobs, it provides sales tax, and I don't think we need to limit them, I think we need to hear and, and encourage them to come to these hearings and discuss more the ordinance 1290, to see if whether we're going to keep it, or, or just amend it, so that everybody has a clear understanding with that. So I just wanted to also ask our director, Mark Castaneda, if you could just kind of give us a brief update where this ordinance stands at, and, and, you know, what we can do to, just to give us a background on it again.
The ordinance actually was last amended in December of 2012, that was at a time we made the amendment in order to allow Superior Cross to open in the city, and at the same time, actually, we did some other amendment to allow, actually, some of, there are two major aspects of the amendment, one was Superior, the other one was to provide some sort of waiver for all the businesses they had opened illegally during that time period, during 12, during the original 1290, to give them a waiver to allow them to come forward, obtain a- to allow them to come forward, obtain a business license to be legalized, to become what we call a legal non-conformant situation. Also, we had actually removed some of the areas along Alderson Avenue, which are west of the Metrolink train, the Metrolink tracks, you know, to continue to operate the industrial uses they have. So there was a substantial amount of amendment that were made, you know, to reintroduce some of the foreign businesses that were present before 1290. What also happened, and will be summarized in the staff report at the next meeting, what also happened at that time, that if you remember, about four years ago, we adopted a zoning code, and along with the zoning code, there was also some new land use being introduced to, to coordinate some of the land use we had previously. Now, that is what we call today as the underlying zoning, be below the 1290. So you have two sets of regulations that we need to look at, one, the impact of 1290 on the, on the businesses, and two, should 1290 be amended again, or even removed, then what would be the underlying zoning, and what would be allowed with that underlying zone? So we're preparing the staff report right now, it's almost in the finishing touches, if I can say, it will be prepared for the city council in two weeks from now, 19.
All right, thank you for that. Also, on another note, I wanted to, and I didn't, I didn't put it down here under council request, but if we could have a, a discussion on, on RFQ for street sweeping services companies, if you could look at that. I know we talked about buying a machine, a street sweeping machine, but I would also like to take a look to compare street sweeping service companies, and if you could do an RFQ, and then bring back some companies that do that, so we could look at that service. Unless you've done it before, am I sure that that was something we were looking at?
I, I, I had looked into, into budget numbers, but I haven't issued an RFQ, so I will go ahead, if this is the direction to, to issue an RFQ, I will hold off on bringing the purpose of the streets.
Okay, but let me just ask the, the city attorney, does this have to be brought as an agenda item for discussion, or can we give direction here?
Mayor Protem?
I didn't agendacize this item, but I'm requesting an RFQ for street sweeper service companies, and I don't know if we can give them direction from here, or does it need to come back as an agenda item?
You should bring it back as an agenda item, Mayor Protem.
Okay, all right, that's, we'll, we'll do that. The other one I wanted to bring up is, because Assembly Bill 60, which requires California Department of Motor Vehicles to issue driver's license to undocumented immigrants who can prove their residency in the state of California, and if they're able to pass a driver's license, I wanted to, and this law takes into effect January 1st of 2015, because they're still working out the details of what the license will look like, the process to take the license, and all these issues, are, the documentation of how to take the exam, and all that is still being discussed by the Department of Motor Vehicles and the legislatures to be able to present this by the beginning of next year. I wanna see if our city manager and our city attorney can get together and take a look at if the possibility of raising some funding for a driver license education project, and request some funding from private companies like driver's license, I'm sorry, car insurance companies, and driving schools of those sorts, or any other company that would be willing to put together a driver education project, and then have a grant available to local nonprofits who would be interested in providing this kind of service. So I'd just like to get a, a staff report put together to see if that's doable. I know we had a nonprofit corporation, and I'm not sure what its current status is, but if we could use that corporation for the purpose of raising private funds for developing a driver license education project. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report on my attendance of the ICA conference, their winter session back in February, and it was very informative. They talked about the active shooter scenarios, how cities can prepare and prevent those devastating incidents that we've seen across the nation, involving, you know, shootings and police response time, and civilians' response as well. So just very, very informative. There was also discussion in a workshop on pension reform, and so it would have been nice for our finance director to be there, just to hear what other cities are doing as well. It's always good to have the perspective and the best, you know, sharing the best practices, so maybe we can consider that in the future, if that's an item that's being discussed. And then, you know, I don't know if our chief would be interested in attending the ICA conferences, but there are a lot of police chiefs, Chief Rainey, Chief McDonald from Long Beach, and different representations, so just really informative and wanted to report back on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? If not, at this point, I'll move for adjournment of the city council meeting, that's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, I'm going to open up the finance, finance committee. We have the public hearing, public hearing and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2013. I know Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco's request has been brought back, I'll open up the public hearing at this point. I see no, no interest, and I now declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I will move for adjournment of the, of the finance authority.
Second.
Oh, yes, excuse me, yes, at this point, we're gonna continue to the 19th, so that's my motion.
Okay, second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, the housing authority, we do have also the public hearing and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2013, which is also have been.